Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Citrus Heights City Council meeting of June 27th. We are opening the regular council meeting and a concurrent special council meeting this evening. Will you please all rise and Councilmember Steve Miller will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, July 1st at 9:00 a.m. and on Wednesday, July 3rd at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the agenda?
We have approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as it's written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
And just Mayor Bruins, we just wanted to report out from closed session that there was no.
Oh, yes.
Or no reportable action from closed session.
Thank you. Okay, I am. Jeff, you need to report out, I wasn't there.
Yeah, what she said.
Okay. There was a closed session with no reportable action. All right, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, and the presentation by the Sacramento Public Library, an update on the Sylvan Oaks Library.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome, Rifka.
Very nice to be here. I'm Rifka Sass, Director of Sacramento Public Library, and before I tell you about all the really cool things going on at your Sylvan Oaks Library, I want to introduce your new branch supervisor, Crystal Miles. She'll be there when the doors open on July 15th, and we wanted to tell you a little bit about our, we're calling it a refresh. It's not a renovation as such, but the building was built in, as you know, 1975 by the County of Sacramento, and not a lot of work has been done on it in those, in the ensuing 45 years. And for the last few years, we've been planning systematic sort of modernizations and updates to our, to our various branch libraries, and this one being so important deserved some attention. So tonight, we're going to talk about why we did it, who our partners were, and invite you to a party, because that's the most important thing. So really, we just wanted to give you a quick overview, show you some photographs, and celebrate the fact that that 12,500 square feet will be more efficient and truly 21st century-ready. Library staff worked on that plan to refresh the building, starting back in 2015, and here we are in 2019, all ready to open the doors. So the project includes, so I have lots of picture, not lots, but a few pictures. I wish they were a little more open-ready, but like every building project, we're not ahead of schedule, but we will open on time. The project is being managed by our partners at the County of Sacramento, and sometimes there are delays, whether it's the arrival of furniture or other things that we want to get done. But this is what we're doing. New paint throughout, new carpet throughout, new flooring, all kinds of new finishes, a really nice enhanced children's area so that we can get kids ready to start, you know, ready to start school, ready to read, an updated teen space, and homework help area, new computers, of course, lots of USB ports, lots of extra outlets for people who bring their own devices, a new service desk, two quiet study rooms. This will be gold for your community, I promise. The number-one complaint pretty much that we get is that our libraries are too noisy because, well, they are, and this gives people an opportunity to have quiet spaces to do one-on-one tutoring, to study for tests, to apply for jobs, or to do other work that sometimes requires a little bit of quiet. We're looking forward to that. The community room will be amazing. We repainted all of the shelving and we cut all the 84-inch shelving down to 72 inches, which results in a much more kind of opening and welcoming space. There's new LED lighting throughout, which makes it more efficient and hopefully lowers our utility costs. $200,000 worth of new books, including in languages such as Ukrainian, Russian, and the other languages that your community, that are, that are well-used in your community. This is the community room. You can see the really cool new lighting, the nice flooring. It's going to be amazing. There's 365-square-foot flexible use space toward the back of the library where the friends can do their sorting for their book sales to raise lots of money for this particular branch. There's a very active friends group. This is to give you an idea of the openness of how the library looks, so you can actually see the beautiful setting and the trees and get an idea of where you are. That park-like setting and the wild turkeys are, and the bunnies, you know, we all love. These are what the computer tables look like. They, again, create a feeling of openness, but also some privacy for the users, so we think they're pretty cool. And again, you can see outside, which I think really enhances the space. The grand reopening celebration, I told you I would talk fast. The grand reopening celebration is Saturday, August 3rd. You'll all get invitations. We hope you'll come out and enjoy the space. Bring the kids. We have, Crystal's been planning all kinds of really cool things, like a shaved ice truck, Henna art, face painting, stuff to happen outside as well, a history, a history exhibit that is put together by our Sacramento Room staff, and then some tours. And of course, and this is for everybody out here, too, if you don't have a library card, we want you to come in and get a library card, because if you haven't checked out a library in a while, you'll be surprised at what we have, including, we'll show you how to download the Libby app, so you can get your books online, and we'll show you how to do Flipster to get your magazines online, for free, because you already pay for it. That's it. Any questions, comments?
Well, go ahead.
Thanks. So, Crystal, it's going to be very important. This is my neighborhood library. This is where my wife walks our little two-year-old up, and she's been heartbroken since this thing has been closed. This is where we also like to play on the playground, and I know that's not part of the library, but this is also where she is reluctant to go to because of riffraff in the area. I want you to become a very good friend of the police department. I want you to make sure you have their phone number, and I want you to please call them and keep this area very nice, because there's no point in opening up this library and people don't feel safe to come to it. So please be a pest if you need to be, and let's keep this a very safe area.
Understood. Thank you.
That's great. Anybody else?
I just, I started doing the math when you talked about it. It hadn't been renovated in 45 years. As a young man, working for the county, we re-carpeted it about 30 years ago. I hope, it looks like you got rid of that carpet.
We did. Yeah, we did. It's actually, I think it's going to be, we sort of determined that this needs to be the gold standard for what our libraries look like after, after they get a little refreshed. So it's, you know, there's a lot of cosmetic, but we also made sure everything works, and to me, that's really important, and that includes the LED lighting and the other enhancements.
And one thing I'd add to Brett's comments is make sure you turn, I know everything works, but make sure you turn the Wi-Fi off in the evening, because that seems to attract some of the riffraff.
It goes off at night.
It goes off in the evening. It does.
Perfect.
Well, I'm excited. You know, this library is a, is a very important element of our community. I know that people have missed it since it's been closed. We were able to relocate your reading club that met there. They're meeting over here now while it's being renovated, but I know they're anxious to get back. So thank you for investing in our community. It will be, continue to be well-used, and I'm glad that we are the sample that you are using elsewhere in the county, and we look forward to the wonderful grand opening.
Thank you so much.
So Rifka, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you as being one of the hardest librarian, executive directors, jack-of-all-trades over this whole organization. It's been very nice to have you onboard in Sacramento, and I hope you, not that I'm wishing you retirement, but I hope that you retire here and don't move on. What I would ask, since you all have a couple minutes here, could you explain to the audience and whoever's watching at home, if they have any interest in that community room, how they would go about signing up for it?
Absolutely. So there are a couple of ways you can do that. You can either go to our website, saclibrary.org, and you can go to the locations tabs, and when you find the Sylvan Oaks Library, you're able to book the room directly from the website. You know, for folks that may have a more difficult time navigating the website or getting online, they can also just call the library, and we're happy to help them with that process.
Thank you.
And that number is 916-264-2920, and that will get you to our telephone information service, and they can help you. Sorry, I remember telephone numbers. I'm glad somebody does.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words, Mr. Slowey.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start you, no, we won't start with Mr. Daniels. We'll start with Ms. Middleton.
I do not have anything to report.
Okay. How about Mr. Miller?
I'll be real quick. We could go Wednesday, went to the Capitol Quarter JPA meeting. The only thing of real note, and this may not mean much to folks, but they reported a 60% fare recovery rate. That means for, when you buy a ticket, it pays for 60% of their operations. That's, that's unbelievable for public transit. RT is struggling around 20% to put a, frame it for you. And they've come out with a new schedule, which will shave time off the commute from Sacramento to San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. Tuesday, went to the 13th Annual Citrus Heights Police Department Honors and Awards, was joined by Vice Mayor Slowey and Councilmember Middleton. And today, Councilmember Middleton and I went to the funeral of Tara O'Sullivan, and we learned that she was a brave lady, a beautiful lady, and a bossy lady from the eulogies she had. So very emotional experience, and I was proud to be able to attend on behalf of Citrus Heights.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
I will keep it short. Mr. Miller already mentioned the award ceremony. Last week, SECOG, which is Sacramento Area Council of Governments, met here in the Citrus Heights Community Center for the first time ever. They've gone off-site. They're actually having their offices remodeled, similar to the library, so, but it was a good turnout, and we saw an interesting presentation on toll roads. And I have to tell you, whether you like toll roads or not, I guarantee you right now that they'll be coming, more of them will be coming to Northern California in the future, because the folks downtown are not going to throw general fund money into roads, even though we all know we need them. And actually, I have to say, I traveled to Florida and Texas on business, and both of them have toll roads, and their roads are light years ahead of ours in terms of repairs. Again, I'm not advocating for or against, but I'm just saying, be prepared that toll roads, more toll roads, because there's eight of them already in California, will be coming, and they will be coming to not only Northern California, but my guess is Sacramento County. So with that, back to you.
Thank you. And I will wrap up with a quick report. I just came back from vacation, so I missed a lot of the events that took place last week. But the, also, the county board of supervisors are on recess, so there was no sanitation board meeting. We did have an education, two-by-two meeting prior to me going on vacation, and some of the things that the, the school districts talked about is how they have to plan to handle for smoke days, which are days where the air is so bad that they have to decide whether the kids can go to school or not. And they also announced that a school coming from Rockland, the Rockland Academy, is looking to open up a campus here as a charter, public charter school here in Citrus Heights. So we may have more information on that as time goes on. And then today, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace meeting, and the big topic of conversation there is their early planning to renew their bid, their Business Improvement District in 2021. So they're already starting to planning for that. And that wraps up, oh, one other thing. Our Police Activities Lead had a trapshoot fundraiser this weekend that was very successful. Thank those people that supported that, and they have more activities going on this summer for your kids, including an extreme sports camp coming up in July, is it July or is it the end of June? I've lost track since I've been gone. Well, look on their website. It's including horseback riding, rope climbing, and, and calm river rafting for the little kids. So look that up. And that's all I have to report. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that the public comments relative to the public hearing, item number five, will be saved for that agenda item, but we have quite a few public comment cards this evening on not only that item, but on just general items as well. So I'm going to limit your presentations to three minutes, and we have quite a few speaker sheets on homelessness, and so I would respectfully ask that if your point has already been made, just be brief that you agree with it, or if you have something new to add to that, feel free to, to speak and say what you need to say. So we'll start out with James Hewitt. Mr. Hewitt, are you in the audience?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will move on to Michael Retslaff.
Evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I, I put this together, I believe, can I get a hand raise of the people that saw my flyer from our neighborhoods? The Green Belt, we live in the Green Belt back behind there. We've had several camps that I've called several times and had the PD come out. This discussion, and my, it's changed a little bit from after talking to Sergeant Evans and knowing the team that he heads, and going to start working closely with him. But some of the things that we're, we've been concerned about, and talking to my neighbors, is the declining property values that having the homeless in that Green Belt area and in the surrounding areas in our, in our subdivisions. The safety of our families, I talked to several people that won't even let their kids go to the park anymore because of the homeless people. The safely, of the, the safety of the homeless and themselves, their camps, if you haven't had a chance or the opportunity to walk around, they smell like death. They're urinating, they're going to the bathroom, and you walk in and it smells like a sewer, which is also compromising the wildlife preserve that we have there. One of the reasons why I bought the house that, where we live over there in Stock Ranch. The other things for the safety for the families is kids like to play in the Green Belt. I just left a camp that I cleaned out a couple weeks ago that was abandoned. We got probably 50 or 75 needles out of that camp, and there's still probably a half a dozen laying on the ground, used and unused. And then, we as a community, there's several of us that I've talked to, we want to know what we can do to help. I understand there's, there's outreaches. Sergeant Evans was telling me that, excuse me, that Walmart is contributing some money, and there's going to be some outreach programs to go out and help. My concern with that is, after talking to Sergeant Evans, is that the majority of the people that I've had the opportunity to talk to that are living in that Green Belt, not just sleeping, but living, is they don't want to be a part of society. They're choosing to be homeless because they just don't want to. So giving them the resources to get not, to not be homeless anymore is, it's not going to help with them. Several officers that I talked to give me a different story than what Sergeant Evans had given me, is they fall back to the ruling of the Ninth District about not being able to prosecute people that are homeless for sleeping in public areas. And I've, I've read the ruling, I kind of think I understand the majority of it, but it talks about sleeping in public areas and not living in public areas. So the officers that I spoke to, so I don't know if it's not being relayed to them, that they can't make them leave because they're, 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 they're living there and they're not sleeping there. So that, that's a concern that I have, that I hope that can be relayed to them, is because they always go, our hands are tied because of that ruling. As you can see, we got a, I got a fairly, we got a fairly large turnout, and it is something, and I know after, like I said, talking to Sergeant Evans, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, for your efforts. Following you will be Tony Calderon, followed by Lawrence.
Hi.
Hi, Tony.
Well, I'm going to say just a few brief things. I think Mike put everything into that shell. I've heard, you've heard it before, and the thing of it is, I just wanted to say that we want to help you folks in the, in the community to making this park a little better, preserve it, and one thing or another. And the thing of it is that I, a while back, I was in Sacramento, downtown Sacramento, and I saw some pictures of a, of a sign that kind of discouraged some of the homeless people from staying there. And I'd like to show it to you. Not urge you.
Give it to Amy Van, please.
This is about says everything about there no camping, smoking, or drinking. And the thing of it is that, so like I said, I would like to congratulate Park District and some of the police department, because they have been done, have been doing quite a bit themselves. They've cut back a lot of the things, and especially on the bike behind Costco, so they can see that a little better, so they don't camp out there. Now, it seemed like they moved over here a little farther south, and they've cleared some of those people out of there, too. But like you said, we won little battles, and we want to, we still have the war going on. Don't get me wrong, I'm sensitive to some of these people, I mean, I feel sorry for them, too, but enough's enough. Okay? That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lawrence will be followed by Laura McAllister.
How do you do, Mayor?
Good evening.
Again, my name is Lawrence Presto. I live in the Green Belt, near the Green Belt here in Stock Ranch. I first want to say that we, we actually appreciate a lot of the efforts that the police department, you know, put in. I, I know this is a kind of a national issue, but some of us are concerned. I, myself, am in law enforcement. I personally have actually met some of the individuals I used to supervise in my current job as a correctional officer. So some of these individuals are not just normal homeless people. They're criminals. I've seen rapists, have guys from murder in there that I've know of. I've sat down in these camps and talked to these individuals. Some of them definitely need help, some of them have mental issues. Some of the things I love to see in attacking some of these problems would be some type of clinician that would go in and assess their mental health being, because these guys are using things that are deadly to themselves and other people. A lot of these guys are infected with diseases, and they're leaving them around for our kids to possibly get stuck on. Today, I went, went for a walk today, and there was a guy with a hatchet on his waist, sniffing a can of paint at the end of the Walmart here, where it used to be a beautiful place to go and walk and just enjoy the nature that used to be there. Now it's cluttered. If you walk over this bridge, it's cluttered with, you know, shopping carts galore. I, I was sitting in my front porch the other night, and there was a lady pushing a shopping cart right in front of my house. And I, again, I'm very compassionate towards individuals who are less fortunate than what we are, but there's got to be some type of solution as a community. I, myself, am volunteering to either start up or, or work with the police department as a community to start either cleaning up, because one of my biggest concerns is, you can go there as officers and attack these camps all you want, but no one so far seems to be responsible 100% for the cleanup of these guys. So if you walk through these camps, normal people with money in the bank, I believe, and I firmly believe this, would be arrested if we had to leave these camps the way they are. Again, some of them have fecal matter in them, some of them have propane tanks discarded within the creeks, all kinds of illegal things that either EPA or other organizations should be involved in as far as cleaning. I don't, I don't know how, how the resources are allocated to clean up some of these issues. Again, I don't think this is anything that's a blame for the police department, because from my understanding, they're pretty well understaffed, and I'd be loved, I'd love to see some type of report as how these guys could be allocated more people on the streets to help do other things rather than just cleaning up homeless people. But this issue is taking away from safeties of the community, you know, that they should be doing, like, you know, chasing down bad guys, not chasing guys out of, out of a park with, with, with shopping carts. I'd like to know if there's any way that you guys have established a cleanup, and if I would even be able to volunteer to drive, drive my truck and help dump these, but I can't afford to, to dump some of this stuff on our dime, and I know several members back here have done that on their own.
I'm sorry, but your time is, is up.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up tonight. Laura McAllister will be followed by Ben Turater, if I'm saying it correctly.
Hello, I'm Laura McAllister. I also live in the Stock Ranch neighborhood, and I appreciate you hearing our comments tonight. I'm a teacher, and I worked really hard for, for 12 years, saving to buy my house in Citrus Heights, and I, I'm really proud of my house. Recently, I was meeting with a teacher friend for dinner, and she mentioned, you know, never go back there by yourself, don't ever walk in the Green Belt, don't ever walk on that path. You know, everywhere we turn, we walk back there is, you know, someone camping or someone using drugs, and that just didn't feel so good, you know, working hard for an accomplishment like that. I just want to feel safe in my neighborhood. I've watched the Park District clean out lots of needles and debris from back in the park, and I have also, I've contacted the police department on the online forum, and they've been great about going in and breaking up homeless camps and, you know, calling me when they, when it was all cleaned up, and I really appreciate that. I have a little free library back in the Green Belt there, and it's been ventilized twice, and I don't have the woodworking tools to replace the door, so I keep, stopped putting books in there. I really have a firm belief in the value of all people, and that as human beings, we can take care of each other. I have also volunteered with the Winter Sanctuary and Loews and Fishes. My suggestion is that perhaps we can create some sort of a comprehensive plan for citizens of our community that's just a message. For instance, homeless advocates recommend that we not give homeless money, cash money, and, but that's something that is happening a lot. So is there a way that we could kind of have a plan that we educate our citizens in our community about to, to help in some way send a common message of what we are all doing together that hopefully will discourage homelessness? Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hello. Hi.
Hi.
I don't do public speeches that much, but I saw the fires, as I might as well come, I saw it today. So I've been a Citrus Heights resident since 1990. I pretty much graduated from San Juan High School. I went to middle school here, and I have to say, City Garden, very nice. I love the infrastructure. You guys invest in the roads and the streets, where you can see the tax money go, which is great. I love that. I love our police department. They do a great job. And I just wanted, about the homeless thing, I don't want to sound like complaining about it, but my wife, with, being pregnant with kids, they love to walk to Costco. I live right here at Stock Ranch, right behind, and they love to walk to Costco, Walmart, right around the corner. At sometime, one time, that incident where homeless was screaming, cursing in front of my kids, scaring my wife, and it was, it was kind of frightening. That was, that was about six months, eight months ago. And then, two months ago, I had, you could see, you could, ask the police department, you could ask my address, I had a homeless, I don't know if he was homeless or what, he, I see it on my camera, a camera popped up on the way home from work. I see a guy dressed in black with a black mask on his face, taking it off, and a black sweater on a black bike, looking around, headed toward my backyard. I told my wife to stay in. I called the police department, they came over, and they arrested him. You could ask the police department, you have my address, and you could see it happen like two months ago. And I don't know what he had on him or what, I mean, they did say he had a hockey outfit gear underneath his sweater, so that kind of worried me. I don't know if he was trying to break into my house or what. I, I am armed in case something does come in my house, but still, I love this area, I want to stay in this area, I don't want to move. I want something done about homeless, and I worry about kids. I see kids playing out there when I walk on the bridge. I saw feces out there before, I saw kids playing out there, and at least for the kids' safety. So if none of them get injured, or some homeless hurt a kid, something needs to be done, either put a sign, make it illegal, or for camping grounds, completely take them out, like, sorry, you know, you can't sleep here. You can hang out here, but not, not sleep here. But just for the public safety, I worry more, and that was my thing that happened, my personal. But I love this area, and I love Citrus Heights, so hope we could do something together to fix it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a couple of other speaker sheets that are not related to the
And that was my thing that happened, my personal, but I love this area, and I love Citrus Heights, so hope we could do something together to fix it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do have a couple of other speaker sheets that are not related to this topic, so before I go on to them, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming. I believe you have expressed what we all feel, and I want to thank you for being respectful and for being proactive and wanting to be part of the solution. I would like to ask our police chief to come forward, please, and just kind of address some of your concerns and let you know what is being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bruins. And I echo what you just said. I really appreciate everything that was said, and I want you to know, as your police chief, I wholeheartedly agree with the concerns. We share your concerns, and I want you to know what we're gonna share with you, hopefully some good news about what we're doing about it and what we have done about it. So, thank you for the comments. Those were very respectful, and we heard you loud and clear. I will tell you that in Citrus Heights, things are actually, I'm gonna talk at a high level, I'm gonna ask Commander Russo to talk to you specifically about Citrus Heights. At a high macro level in Citrus Heights, in comparison to the Sacramento region, we're actually doing pretty good. The Sacramento region as a whole, over the last two years, saw a 19% increase in homelessness. They estimate about 5,500 homeless in Sacramento region, and about 3,900 of those are determined to be unsheltered. In Citrus Heights specifically, though, we do our own count once every year in April. We take the whole month of April, and we identify as many homeless individuals as we can. And in 2018, our number was 186. In 2019, that number dropped to 163. And since January of this year, just the last six months, through our Navigator program, we were successfully able to house 19 individuals. And I know our Navigator is here tonight. So, our approach is a two-pronged approach. Our Navigator works to get those who want to receive services, the help that they want. Veterans, people that are needing a shelter and willing to accept it, people that are suffering from drug addiction or mental health issues. We work to get them into the right programs. We also have a mobile crisis technician with the police department, who's a part of the county that rides with us, and she deals with those that are suffering from mental illness. So, the second prong to our approach, though, is those that don't want assistance, that are committing crimes, we take an aggressive enforcement approach, and we heard some of that tonight. So, we do what we can do legally to take an enforcement approach after we've offered them the help that we try to get them into. So, with that, I'm gonna ask Commander Russo to talk specifically about some of the things we're actively working on, some of which are at that specific location.
Good evening, council and community. I do want to appreciate all of you that came here today, and thank you again for bringing this forward. We do hear these concerns, not just from your community, but in Citrus Heights in general, on these nuisance-related issues that come about. I want to give you a little bit of great news, just as quick as I can, for tomorrow. So, I know that you guys mentioned that Sunrise Parks, and they have cleaned up a lot of the area. We do have some members of Sunrise Park here in the room with us, who are our partners, and they're gonna be cleaning up the other side of the creek and kind of trimming up the trees and cleaning it up tomorrow. So, you should see some progress out there tomorrow, which helps with the visibility, and it helps prevent those camps from being set up. There's also two camps that have been identified and posted in that neighborhood that we're aware of and should also be cleaned up tomorrow that'll help. What I did like hearing as well is the encouragement of you guys wanting to be involved. That's really important in solving this problem. We can't do it alone, as you know. It takes the whole community. So, I know Sergeant Evans has already talked to a few of you, but we are looking at setting up a community cleanup day where we can work in partnership with your neighbors and work together to help clean it up and dispose of it properly, so that it's not causing you an undue hardship or burden of her disposal. And I know we have some partners in our waste management that are partners with the community that we can include in that and help us properly dispose of things we need. So, those are the two, you know, immediate results that I want to highlight, that you're gonna see right away. But in the near future, we can schedule that community cleanup, and we look forward to partnering with you, and maybe this will grow into something that can be effective in other communities, other neighborhoods as well, that have these same concerns in their neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you once again for coming this evening. You're welcome to stay and hear the rest of the meeting. So, I really...
Mayor?
Yes?
Let me say a few words. I'm gonna piggyback on some comments I made either last meeting or a meeting before that, that I'm done tolerating. I'm done. I'm like these folks out here, and I think we're all done, but, and I appreciate the chief's comments and the commander's, and it's very true that we do a lot of things way above and beyond what any other place does. But we're not San Francisco, and we're not Sacramento, and the community gets what the community tolerates, and we don't want to tolerate this kind of stuff anymore. We have people coming to our city council meetings telling us their kids can't go to the park. They can't go play in certain areas because they might come across an abandoned camp with hazardous material. They can't just enjoy their own lives where they decided to come to Citrus Heights because they live near a Green Belt. I live near a Green Belt, too, and I have the same kind of issues, and it just needs to change. Something needs to stop, and we need, we're failing. That's bottom line is, we're failing. We are failing as a city. The police department is not failing. That's not the issue. It is not an issue of not having the right amount of resources. We have money. We decide what to do with money, and we need to decide to do something about this, and it needs to be aggressive, and it needs to be realistic. People are gonna go to the bathroom, and they're gonna sleep every day, and if we don't do something about that, then we're just gonna create, aggravate the problem. So, you know, I would advocate for putting frickin' porta-potties out in these areas. At least they'll go, hopefully, use them or whatever. That's not gonna enable them, okay? But I want to, I don't want my kid to come across that kind of stuff while they're playing. But we need to do something more aggressive. We need to be doing sweeps. We need to be going into these areas literally every single damn day and clearing these people out. The ones that are suffering from mental illness and stuff like that, we're probably not gonna be able to change that behavior, you know? And it's sad as a society that we can't go back to a time, or we won't go back to a time, when we realize that people with mental illness need to be institutionalized somewhere. They cannot take care of themselves. They're walking down the frickin' street, barking like a dog. They're not gonna get a job. They're not gonna be able to live anywhere, and it's cruel as society that we don't put these people somewhere. But the folks that are out there and they're just suffering, those are the ones that we do need to focus on, and we've done a good job with that, of getting people off the streets that want to be off the streets. But we have that element, again, that doesn't want help. They want to live this lifestyle, and they want their lifestyle to continue to crap on us, and it needs to stop. And it's only gonna stop if we do something, because they're not gonna stop. So, we need to sweep their areas constantly, literally every single day, you know? We have a traffic unit. I don't know why we don't have a homeless unit. We need to send people out literally every day into these areas and clean them out, get them out. The last thing these guys want, those kind of people, are to see the cops. They don't want the cops in their lives. And so, we need to just do something to start facing this and stop saying, we're doing a wonderful thing, we've got our navigator, who is an incredible person. You don't understand, folks. Go down to Sacramento and hang out for a little bit. God forbid, go to San Francisco and hang out a little bit. But again, we're gonna continue to have what we tolerate, and we gotta stop tolerating these idiots that are crapping on us, and get rid of them, and we're failing not doing that. I'm done.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay.
No, the frustrating part.
All right. Thank you once again for coming this evening. We really appreciate seeing you here. And then, earlier I had a speaker sheet from James Hewitt. I also see Travis Hewitt. So, maybe Travis is here. I think they're here for the same topic. Is either James or Travis Hewitt here?
Travis had to go on a tow.
Is James here?
There, he's in room talking with the tow officer right now.
Okay. Then, that closes public comment, then we'll go on to the next item, please.
The next item, consent calendar, there are none. So, the next item is public hearing and on the special meeting, the regular calendar items. So, I'll read those two items. The first, number five, is the subject is the Electric Greenway Trail Project Adoption of Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the Citrus Heights Electric Greenway Trail Project Initial Study, Mitigated Negative Declaration, Mitigation Monitoring Plan. And also, item two, the subject Electric Greenway Trail Project Authorizing Final Engineering Design and Right-of-Way Phases, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution directing staff to proceed with the final engineering design and right-of-way phases of the Electric Greenway Trail Project consistent with the adopted initial study, mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring plan.
Okay, thank you. And for this item, I must recuse myself, because I live within 500 feet of the project, and by law, I have a conflict of interest. So, I will be turning this portion of the meeting over to Vice Mayor Jeff Slowey, and I will be leaving the premises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bruins. All right. Casey Leslie, take it away.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Slowey and council. My name's Casey Kemp, and I'm in the Planning Division, and joined by Leslie Blumquist of the General Services Department. So, as Amy said, we're here tonight to ask you to adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Electric Greenway Project and direct staff to proceed with the engineering design and right-of-way for the next phase of the project. So, on tonight's agenda, we're gonna give an overview of the Electric Greenway, talk about some of the history of trails in Citrus Heights over the last several years, a history of the Electric Greenway. We'll go over briefly the NEGDEC, and then we'll talk about the next steps, which include directing us to move forward with the next design phases. So, can you see my arrow on your screens?
Yep.
Okay. So, just an overview of the map. The trail, Electric Greenway Trail, will start at Arcade Creek Park Preserve, which is a park we already have a trail in. The trail will continue north and cross at the existing signal at Cyanara Drive. Trail will continue south until it reaches a SMUD substation road. Follow that SMUD substation road to Tempo Park. Go through Tempo Park, following largely the existing path there. At Fair Oaks Boulevard, there will be a pedestrian activated signal added to Fair Oaks Boulevard, which will only turn red when people are crossing the street and then go back to green. At that point, you leave the city, and one of our project partners is Orangevale Recreation and Park District, so they are responsible for Sundance Park, and there's an existing trail that will largely be followed there through Sundance Park. When you reach Highwood Way, the trail would go on-street to the existing street of Highwood and Woodmore Oaks. And near the 711 on Woodmore Oaks, the trail would proceed northeast towards String Avenue Park, which is also managed by Orangevale Parks and Rec. At String Avenue, it would cross back into the city and enter Northwoods Park, which is managed by Sunrise Parks and Rec. Continue northwards, north through the existing trail, following existing alignment, crossing at Oak Avenue. At Cbar C, there's an existing signal there that would be improved and would allow crossing. From there, the trail will continue northward through Cbar C Park along the existing trail alignment, connecting to Woodside Elementary, providing a spur to Woodside Elementary. And from there, it'll go northeast along existing easements through the Olivine and Claypool neighborhood to Woodmore Oaks Park. The trail will terminate at Wachtel Way at the city limits. Wanted to give a little regional context about the trail. So, as you can see, the city's in the middle of the region, and we're surrounded by this regional vision to have a 70-mile loop of trails connecting throughout both Plastra and Sacramento County. So, you can see here on the map, the red line represents Electric Greenway. It provides connectivity to plans that Sacramento County has to connect the trail to the east, which will allow us to connect to the existing American Parkway. And then, Roseville's working on the Dry Creek Greenway just to north of the city limit, so it gives us an opportunity to connect to Roseville all the way under I-80 and through Dry Creek Greenway to a really cool 70-mile loop. As the council probably recalls, in 2014, the city conducted the Creek Quarter Trail Project, and what that was, was to take a look at all of our 26 miles of creeks and utility corridors to see what was feasible for trail construction. As part of that, the council directed us to prioritize things based on what trail's connected to, with the property was publicly owned, how tough it was to build. And so, the blue lines represent the priority one trail segments, so those were the easiest to build. They provided key destinations such as parks and schools, and the council directed us in 2014 to proceed with those, of which this three-mile Electric Greenway is part of that priority one trail. So, previously, again, the council directed us to move forward with those priority one trails. They asked us to update the bikeway master plan to include those trails, adopt the pedestrian master plan, which includes those trails, and then identify funding to actually construct those trails. And during, prior to construction, we would do additional outreach and design during the environmental phase. We'll do the final engineering design right-of-way, go on with construction, and then finally ongoing maintenance of the trail. So, this just illustrates, this document, the Creek Quarter Trail Project blended into both the bikeway master plan and pedestrian master plan. The bikeway master plan included a mitigated negative declaration that looked at the bikeway system as a whole and covered the whole project and what it would do, but it did require some specific additional studies and additional environmental work in order to move forward. And that's why we're here today, is to, that specific environmental studies necessary for the Electric Greenway. So, that's what we're here for today. So, this just, again, shows the process. We've incorporated trail segments into our city documents. We've found funding, which Leslie will touch on in a moment. We're on the green squares here. We're currently doing the outreach engineering design, and the middle square is where we are tonight. We're asking you to consider the environmental document and direct us to go forward. Later step, the next time, we'll come to you with asking for authorization for construction and the long-term maintenance would be in a couple of years from now. And I'll turn over to Leslie to talk about the funding.
So, based on previous council directions, staff did apply for an active transportation program grant. This is managed by Caltrans, and it is a grant that provides funding specifically for projects that encourage biking, walking, and alternative transportation. So, in 2016, we submitted our application. They received over 450 applications requesting nearly $1 billion in funds. They selected projects totaling about $350 million, and that included the Electric Greenway Trail Project. We were awarded approximately $6.2 million for this project for all different phases. It is a 2.9-mile trail. It'll be 10 feet wide with two 2-foot-wide shoulders on either side, connecting to seven different parks, the Sunrise Marketplace, Woodside K-8, as well as the future trail that will be going through the Mitchell Farms Development. The project is a partnership between San Juan School District, Sunrise Park District, Orangevale Park District, Sat County, and SMUD. So, to date, we have completed the 30% design, or is commonly referred to as preliminary engineering. During this evaluation, we did conduct a topographic survey. So, you can kind of see on here some of the contour lines of the existing topography out there. That was used to develop an alternative, the preferred alternative for the trail alignment, and looked at grading and some details there, and that's what was used for the environmental analysis.
So, again, tonight, we're asking you to approve the mitigated NEGDEC, and the intent of that is to identify any potential environmental impacts and then mitigate those potential impacts to less than significant levels. And it has to include mitigation measures to protect the environment during construction, during operation of the trail. So, before you, you should have received one on the dais that was updated with minor clarifications, but the mitigation measures remain the same. There's six measures related to biological features, which include sensitive plants and animals that are protected by state and federal regulations, protected trees, which are protected by the city and the county, regulatory permits, which is permits for our bridge crossings, which would need fishing game and Army Corps approval, and then erosion control protection to ensure sediment is not entering our creeks. Also, there's traffic mitigation to ensure that during construction, we're not causing any traffic issues. Air quality during construction, there has to be, the equipment has to meet certain standards. Cultural, we deny identifying any cultural resources along the corridor, but if there were inadvertent discoveries, we would stop work, and there's a process we would go through accordingly. Hydrology, we looked at the potential for flooding. Our bridges have all been designed to be above the flood elevation, but there is mitigation requiring us to demonstrate that the final design does meet those standards and will not increase any flooding. And then also, there's a hazard mitigation and make sure that any construction equipment doesn't pollute our creeks during the construction. So, the MND concludes that there is no evidence of any significant environmental impacts remaining after we complete the mitigation. And then, NEGDEC is the appropriate level of environmental review, and ER is not necessary for this project. So, we had an opportunity for community feedback. We've heard from a lot of the community. We've had two open houses. We've met with several neighborhood associations. We had an online virtual community workshop. We had a specific meeting with the neighborhood on Claypool and Olivine. And then, I want to point out, you should also have on your dais numerous letters that were received after the packet was released. So some of the, this lists some of the key community concerns, aesthetics and fencing, lighting, trail impact on trees, homelessness and crime, easements and a lawsuit and a narrow alley feature, which we'll talk about momentarily. So in terms of aesthetics, folks were concerned with what types of fencing there would be and what the tree removal would look like. So in general, the fencing would be similar to what's out there. The picture on the left represents a picture of the existing area along the Greenway. The pictures on the right are options that we've talked about can be implemented as part of the project, and those options will be done in consultation with the property owners that are affected, and those options are comparable to what's out there are better. In terms of trees, the city is a tree city USA, and our goal is to reduce impacts of trees as much, as much as we can. And then for trees that are removed, we are required to plant new trees to replace them. In terms of lighting, there, we have included lighting in the plan. There's various options depending on where we're at. Parks may have different lighting than along narrower corridors. So there's post tile, solar powered, or bollard-style lights, but the key design features for all of them is they're full cutoff, dark sky compliant, where only light will shine downwards. They won't shine in people's backyards. It'll fully, only shine on the trail. We heard that folks had some concerns about trees coming out, and in practice, our practice is to avoid trees removal as much as possible. For purposes of the NEGDEC, we have to assume a worst-case scenario under sequoia, so it kind of assumes that all the trees would be coming out within a certain swath. But in reality, when we build trails, we look at where we can avoid taking those out. So the pictures illustrate options to avoid removing trees. The picture on the top right shows a small retaining wall to help avoid and save those trees. Picture on the bottom shows bringing the trail closer to trees and working with arborists to make sure that the trail doesn't impact those trees. So this slide's meant to illustrate what was assumed by the environmental document on the left, kind of assumes that most of those trees are going to come out, just based on our survey in the study area. But in reality, the picture on the right shows what we do in reality, is we meander the trail where we can around trees to try to save those as much as possible. There's also a lot of concerns we've heard from folks about crime and homelessness, and we've worked really closely with our police department in understanding these concerns and addressing these concerns. And working with police department, they said one of the biggest advantages of a trail is it allows for natural surveillance. Currently, the trail in several places is blocked by fencing. You can't get through, so it creates this kind of dead-end area where PD can't get through and they can't access. If there's an emergency, it just dead-ends. So by opening that up, we have start-to-finish emergency access, and also by introducing legitimate trail users, there are eyes and ears on the trail to help report back to PD if there's an issue. But also, as we've heard, the homeless people don't like to hang out where people are coming by. They like to be tucked away and hidden corners, and so this trail will eliminate those hidden corners. There's also safety features in the scope of work, including lighting, that we talked about call boxes, and a big one is lifting the vegetation, and that has to do with lifting up the branches of the trees, so you have a clear line of sight into the area, so they're not, as trees droop, that creates a hiding spot, so we'll lift those up so that you have better visibility. And also important part is patrolling the trails and maintenance of the trails. So we have proposed in the future having a memorandum of understanding with both Sunrise Parks and Rec and Orangevale Parks and Rec for the patrol and maintenance of the trails, so there's a cohesive approach to the patrol through three different agencies and the maintenance as well. This is Arcade Creek Park Preserve. Many of you are aware of this. This is a park that's just south of Sayonara. Prior to the park going in, for all intents and purposes, there was a large homeless encampment there, as illustrated on the left. After the park went in, the homeless issue went away. There's very few calls for service in this park. It's one of our most popular parks in the city, and you'll see families using this park day and night. Heard stories of families walking from the Sayonara area, walking down towards the Sunrise Marketplace, going for dinner at night, and never heard any problems associated with that. I'll turn over to Leslie to talk about easements.
So in front of you now is a map and kind of showing the trail alignment. Each different color represents a different property owner here, and so on the upper right, in the dashed red kind of oval, you'll see a red line. That's private property where we have existing easements over, so I just want to talk about that a little bit. So an easement grants the right to use the property, whether it's owned by yours, or when it's owned by someone else, for a specific purpose. In this case, these easements are granted to the city for the purpose of an equestrian, bicycle, and pedestrian trail. Initially, we thought we had a 25-foot easement on both the properties, on Claypool and on Olivine. During our first open house, we learned about a lawsuit from the early 80s between the property owners and the county of Sacramento, and the outcome of that lawsuit indicated that the easements on the Olivine property were not valid. So what we do have is a 25-foot easement on the Claypool properties, which we do believe is wide enough for a safe and convenient trail. On the other side of Villa Oak, highlighted in the yellow box, or I'm sorry, in the purple box here, is a separate parcel. This is own, one parcel, it's not across the others, it's just adjacent to it. It is owned by one property owner. We have an IOD across this, as well as an easement. An IOD is an irrevocable offer of dedication, so at any point in time, the city can accept that dedication, and then it would turn over ownership to the city. The IOD is 30 feet wide, but in addition to that, we also have a 25-foot easement on top of that for equestrian, bicycle, and pedestrian trail use. So on the other side, back to the Villa Oak on the north side, this is the, in the light orange, is the 25-foot easement that we do have, and in the dashed red is the approximate center line of the trail as proposed. In the upper right, or sorry, upper-left corner, you can kind of see a picture of what this easement looks like now if you were standing on Villa Oak. That is approximately 25 feet wide. Along that easement right now, there are some existing fences and barriers, so you cannot leave Villa Oak and end up in the park as you will be able to should the trail be constructed. There are several properties that have fences across them. Those are shown in the red arrows here. We have heard from the community about the concern that this will be creating somewhat of an alleyway. It is a little over 1,000 feet long and 25 feet wide. The next few slides, there are some photos of what this looks like now as you kind of walk up. There is a lot of overgrown vegetation, there's some debris, it is an attractive nuisance. There have been calls for service out here. Again, as Casey mentioned on previous slides, by really cleaning this up, lifting the vegetation and installing the trail, and in communication with the police department, we do believe that this will create and reduce some of that activity or all of that activity. Removing the barriers will allow emergency vehicle access to start on one end and complete and continue all the way through to the other end, improving access beyond what it is now. Here's some more photos of what the easement looks like currently, just to give you an idea of how it appears now. Recently, we went on a field trip to a similar trail in Roseville in a very similar neighborhood to what this trail is proposed in Citrus Heights. This is a little bit more narrow, less than 25 feet in width, and we went out there during the day. We noticed a lot of people using the trail, families, young females running, older gentlemen walking, many dog walkers, and we also spoke with Roseville PD and asked them. It's a similar length, a little over 1,000 feet, and over the last 12 months, they stated they haven't had any incidents on the trail. This is another similar application in the city of Folsom, also a little bit more narrow, less than 25 feet wide than what we are proposing, but this just illustrates other communities in the area that have similar trails that are experiencing legitimate trail users out there, and they have not expressed any concern with homelessness.
So as we mentioned, the next steps, if the council adopts the mitigated negative declaration tonight, would begin the final engineering design and right-of-way phases. And final engineering just means it's a detailed engineering, where you look at exactly how thick the pavement's going to be and things like that in more details. Continued property owner engagement will be a big part of this. We'll be communicating with the property owners along the corridor, as well as the broader community, and then eventually, we'll get to the construction phase, and 2021 is our target date for construction, and then we'll do ongoing maintenance and patrol. And again, we envision a MOU with both park districts to ensure we're all on the same page in terms of maintenance and patrolling. So with that, we've asked the council to make a resolution adopting the environmental document, as well as directing us to move forward with the next steps. And Leslie and I are available, as well as the whole team in the police department, for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Casey. Counsel, any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. So we have 13 folks who would like to speak, so I will also cut the time to three minutes, just in the interest of the evening. So I think the first one may have left. She said she could only be here till 7:45. Kimberly Asbury, did you already leave? All right, she was in support of it. Catherine Carpenter. Catherine, Kathy Lynn, you know, that's the old lazy eye on the left side here, so. Sorry, Kathy Lynn.
I've only been here 20 years. Just kidding. Vice Mayor, Council members, Kathy Lynn Carpenter, Chair of the Citrus Heights Heart Homeless Assistance Resource Team Organization, and I'd like to just make points from two perspectives. One is as a resident, not a resident of Citrus Heights, but I am, I live just across the border on Fair Oaks, across, in the Marquee Development, and I do walk in Citrus Heights every single night and every single day. I walk twice a day. I walk my dogs. If you're in that area, you've seen me and my Great Dane and two Chihuahuas walking up and down the street. Generally, I walk to Tempo Park and Sundance, and what I have found in those walks is that those areas are well-lit, especially when the park department put the path in the back. So you remember, it used to be very dark back there, and then they put a well-lit path toward the very back of Tempo Park. I walk there at 11 o'clock, midnight, I walk there very late at night, try not to, I try to walk during times where there aren't other dogs out, and I always feel safe and comfortable, and I have not come across homeless or other criminal elements in that park. I also walk in Sundance, and because again, there is a path, it's well-lit, I feel very comfortable walking over there at night, and I do not come across, even though there is quite a bit of green belt and natural area there, I have not come across any activity there either. I do look forward to the signalized crossing between Tempo and Sundance. I often feel like I'm taking my life in my hands running across the street. There is a lot of speeding, you may know, on Fair Oaks, and it's kind of hard to gauge sometimes how fast a car is coming, so we do always feel nervous crossing the street there. So I do look forward to that. I think that's going to be a really great amenity. And I just want to, very quickly, because this is not an item on homelessness, if it is your pleasure, I would be happy to come back at another time and give a report on Citrus Heights Heart to try and address some of the concerns. I will say that the other places I walk are homeless camps, and I walk homeless camps quite often in the Mitchell Field and in the field adjacent to CVS. And these are dark, there isn't, there are no lights, so it is attractive for the homeless because there's not a trail through there and it is not well-lit, and so it's easy for me to find camps and chat with the folks back there because they're comfortable back there. So I think developing a trail through that area, I think, would do, you know, a lot to eliminate that. So again, I'm happy for the residents that are here. If you would like to contact me regarding some of the concerns you have about homeless and you'd like to attend our meetings to learn more about how you can help, I would be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Lynn. Jennifer Rubin, followed by Tom Geronimo? Geronimo? My fault, closing up.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council and staff. My name is Jennifer Rubin. I work for Dignity Health out of Mercy San Juan Medical Center, so just around the corner. And among our many services, we are a Level 2 Verified Adult Trauma Center. So we treat folks that come in because they have been injured. And in 2018, we saw 109 people that had been struck by a car while walking in our emergency room, and we saw 101 people that had been struck by a car while bicycling. And those are folks that had come into our emergency room. Not all of those incidents are from within Citrus Heights borders. Of course, we serve a larger area than just the city boundaries, but it is our second leading cause of injury coming in as trauma. The first is older adult falls, which I hope we could talk about in another time. But in terms of bicycle and pedestrian injuries, we wanted to express our support for some of the trail project elements that would increase traffic safety. My job is trauma prevention, trying to prevent some of these injuries before they occur. So whatever we can do to have safe walking and biking paths, we would love. So some of the elements listed were a new signalized crossing on Fair Oaks, some pathway lighting, sidewalk improvements, and traffic signal improvements. So we're looking forward to all of those things and keeping folks safe as they walk and bike. When we dig into our numbers of who those folks are that are getting hit while walking and biking, it's different than we might think it is. We go into it with some preconceived notions that it might be older folks, folks experiencing homelessness, or might be intoxicated, and that's not the numbers that we're seeing in our emergency room. It's actually ages 20 to 40. Most of them do not test positive for drugs or alcohol and are not listed as experiencing homelessness. So these are mostly folks just trying to get from point A to point B. It's usually between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM, so some of those twilight hours, when it's hard for drivers and bicyclists and pedestrians to see each other. So just trying to get everyone around town safely, that's our job, and so if we can get folks some safe places to walk and bike, we would be in favor of that. So thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the education. Tom, and I apologize on your last name. You can correct me when you come up front.
I've heard worse.
Okay.
I'll take Geronimo any other, any day of the week, but it's Tom DeGiacomo.
Okay.
And I'm actually the president of the Woodmore Oaks Neighborhood Watch, which encompasses from Sunrise to Kenneth, from Oak Avenue to Greenback Lane. So it takes in a lot of this trail project situation, and I'm hearing it from everybody, both sides of the coin, and I know that it's a big, big task. What I'm trying to tell the neighbors is that the train's left its station. It's not going to go back, and this trail's going to go forward, and I'm, you know, I can't do nothing about that. All we can do is try to get the best that we can make it happen for the, for the neighborhood. So a couple of concerns that I've had from day one, they had two open houses, which I'm grateful they did that, and they took a lot of the comments, which I'm glad they did that too, which they did work on those comments with their report. But I just want to share that the biggest concerns I have is, number one, is the lighting and patrolling, and the lighting of some stop signs, especially on Woodmore Oaks, because it's like a speedway going through there. And I live right on Highwood, right where Sundance Park comes out onto Highwood. Highwood's part of this trail. So I have a very strong concern about how things are going to go on Highwood since I live there. When I mentioned the fact about lighting, they said in both their reports after the open houses was that lighting is optional, okay? And that concerns me a lot when they say it's optional. Some parts of the trail will be lighted, some parts won't be lighted. That's not right, and it should not be that way. If you're going to light part of the trail, you have to light the whole trail. That's including Highwood Way and Woodmore Oaks that don't have lights right now. So we're expecting to see streetlights in there to make this all one big trail with a lot of, with lighting throughout the whole trail, not just parts of it. Patrolling is another concern. The lady mentioned about not seeing homeless over in the parks. I live right there, and I have seen Sundance Park homeless many a times, and the concern I have with patrolling is they were coming through patrolling wise maybe once a week, and that's how Orangeville Park is set up to do that. If we're going to do a trail like this, we need its own separate patrol, and it needs to be patrolled twice a day. The concern we have with homeless, when they get into that park, is once they put their tent up, they go in the next day, you have a 72-hour tag that you've got to put on that. So those people can't move for 72 hours, or the stuff can't be moved for 72 hours, and that's not right. So the patrolling needs to be done in the morning and at night so that there is not the chance of a tent going up, and that's what I really can, want to see happening. The last thing, as far as the stop signs go, on Woodmore Oaks and various areas, is that they make these solar lights with the blinking stop thing. That is the biggest thing that we need on those areas to make sure that cars do stop because they're not stopping now. And on Fair Oaks Boulevard, that's, I'm scared about that going over from Tempo to Sundance Park. When you go down Fair Oaks Boulevard, it is tough to see, that is. It's going to be done real well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. And you have a great national night out, too. Appreciate going over there. All right, we're going to next hear from Sam Galt, followed by Corinne Kumar.
Good evening. My name's Sam Galt. I live on a court, and my, excuse me, my backyard abuts to a greenbelt easement between Woodmore Oaks. Woodmore Oaks Drive and Strang Avenue, which is in unincorporated Sacramento County. There's a 7-Eleven store right near our house, which, as much as I shop there, it's an attractive nuisance. It gathers a undesirable, unsavory element, which tend to congregate in the easement behind my house at two o'clock in the morning. We saw the pretty pictures that these people showed us of the bikeways during the daylight, when the legitimate users are using it, but at two o'clock in the morning behind my house, it's a completely different story. We've had motorcycles going back there at all hours of the night. I've chased homeless people out of there, found human feces, used needles, used condoms, stolen cars. A young man was stabbed over there as a spillover from a fight that happened at the 7-Eleven. Nothing good has ever happened out there. And my fear is that by opening that up, it's just going to create a thoroughfare for that undesirable element, to have an unobstructed path to go from the 7-Eleven at Woodmore Oaks all the way up to the north end by where it terminates, by, I believe it's Sebar's, or excuse me, the elementary school there on Villa Oak. Another concern that I have is that when I purchased that house in 1981, I've lived there in the same house for thirty-nine years, and I'm speaking from my own experience. I don't know what's going to happen, but I can tell you what has happened habitually in my thirty-nine years there. And as I said, nothing good's ever happened out in that field, from assault to homelessness and all that type of thing. But another problem I have is when I bought that house, one of the selling points was that I had RV access, and the builder, the original builder, set up a double-wide gate that's sufficient to drive a truck, or a boat, or a fifth-wheel trailer through, and that'll be sacrificed. I'll lose that. I won't have any access to my own backyard any longer, because I'm sure that I won't be allowed to drive a motor vehicle on this property. And I have to take exception to what this nice lady said about, I frequent the same parks. I walk there frequently in the morning with my wife and some friends of mine, and I, one could make the argument that if I had a one-hundred-plus-pound Great Dane, nobody would bother me either, but I have seen homeless people out there. I have seen the aftermath of what they leave behind out there. And I think that this project is, is just not a good idea. All of the homes there where I live, the yards are long and deep. It's about a hundred feet from my back patio to the back fence. So something could be going on out there, and I'm unaware of it because of the sheer distance between my house and that fence. And as I said, at two o'clock in the morning, I don't care how well-lit the area is, it's still relatively secluded, and there won't be any legitimate traffic out there, and it's going to be just an invite to the unsavory criminal element that none of us want to have out in back of our homes. And quite honestly, I'd list my house for sale tomorrow, but I couldn't give it away because I have to disclose this nuisance that's in back of me. And this problem, or this walkway, is only going to exacerbate the existing problem. And I think my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your coming forward. Corinne Kumar, followed by Trish Dawson. Welcome, sir.
Hello, Vice Mayor, Slowie, members of the council. My name is Corinne Kumar. I'm with the organization called Walk Sacramento. We work across the region to promote health, equity, economic development, and safety through investments in active transportation projects like these. We've been involved in trail projects across the region, have seen the massive benefits that they've brought to community after community. The Electric Greenway Project is important for so many different reasons. In all of our lives, we have less access to physical activity in green space every single day, spending more and more time in our cars. Projects like these have led to tangible health benefits across communities, especially for seniors and children. The project helps create a safe-out-to-school connection in Citrus Heights. Walk Sacramento helped write the city's safe-out-to-school plan several years ago, and one of the primary wishes of parents at the time were safer off-street trails that got their students to and from school. The project also connects people with job shopping and other destinations throughout the city that would otherwise require trips on major thoroughfares like Greenback and Auburn. Trail projects can help save lives, and we've seen this across the region. I also wanted to touch on a couple of the design elements that the planning staff had brought up. They're using what is typically called crime prevention through environmental design strategy, so cutting back the shrubbery to three foot at the ground and six foot at the ground, incredibly valuable for creating lines of sight along the trail segment, so that even when you do have kind of the, the curves to avoid trees, you're not creating dead spaces, and that's really important. The other thing that I would really lift up is the fact that there is a proposed MOU between the parks districts in the city and PD, and that's incredibly important for ongoing maintenance. If we're serious as a community about safety, health, and access, it's really important that we build projects like these. So we strongly urge supportive of the Electric Greenway Project via means of the, approving the MND today, and then thank you for your, your consideration and leadership on this.
Thanks, sir. Trish Dawson, followed by Glenn and Dennis Wright. Are you both going to speak? One?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Welcome, Trish.
Thank you. It's good to see you. I am speaking on behalf of the trail and being in favor. Boy, I haven't been up in front of a microphone in a while. So my husband and I and our family have lived in Citrus Heights since nineteen eighty-six. I live right a block away from Woodside School and have walked the unofficial trails in that area, down Olivine, the Beltway over to Watchtale. I've tried to go across Oak Avenue and walk over in the, the power, under the power lines there. And it's, I do it because it's lovely to get out in nature and get out, and some fresh air, and away from the traffic, but it is really treacherous also. And so I'm so much in favor in proving those areas that I already walk to make them more accessible. I'd love to be able to walk my dog out there, but now I'm too concerned about ticks. But you know what the dog park at Sebar C? It would be wonderful. Right now, they're, that parking lot is full because people come in, they, they pack their dog up, they go over to Sebar C, they go out and run around. Well, how many of them, only a few blocks away, that they could use, utilize the park, the Beltway, and access the dog park? Anyway, bottom line, we're in favor, and I hope you approve the mitigated declaration.
Thank you, Trish. All right, Glenn Wright and Art Starkovich will be next.
Hi, thank you for letting us come and speak today. I'm opposed to the project. We have been working and being opposed, obviously, for a couple of years now. We're one of those people that we actually are going to lose land for this project. And my concern is for my safety of my grandson, who has special needs and lives with us. He has high-functioning autism, special sensory disorder. He does not do well with changes, having part of his yard cut out, which is very closely adjutant to where our do-boy pool for him is. He has no stranger danger. He's eight and a half, and as I said, he's listed with Alter Regional as a special needs handicapped child. We are very concerned about having this disruption in our life. My husband has stage-four cancer. He does not sleep well. Our bedroom adjusts right up to this greenbelt area. You're going to have people going through that area with the heat. Some people like to go through at two, three, four o'clock in the morning if they're going to be doing activity. I do not dispute anybody's right for recreation. I'm concerned about my own family's health. He's suffering and not having a sleep. He actually got cancer serving his country, and it's frustrating to us. We brought this home in nineteen ninety-three, and we're being told that we have no rights. The land will be taken, and this greenbelt will go in, and we find that very frustrating that we have no voice in this. We've sent letters. We were given the opportunity to send a letter stating our case to the senior planner. Obviously, our concerns are our own, and probably seem a little selfish, but we're a family unit. We live there, we own the property, and we feel our rights are being denied in this. I feel like we're in a corridor, which is a very blind area. We're more in the Orangeville area, and we have not even been assured that there will be bike patrols. Citrus Heights has that. Orangeville is hoping to have some type of bike patrol. So you're having us having to monitor the situation ourself as to what type of element we're going to have going through that area in a semi-lit area. We have a community that's pretty disabled, retired. They have a lot of dogs we keep for safety in the backyard. They're going to be barking. Somebody goes through at three o'clock in the morning cranking on a bike, those dogs are going to be barking, very disruptive to sleep habits. Again, I probably sound a little selfish on our personal unit, but these are legitimate concerns for my family. And we are losing property, which seems a little unjust in America, which is supposed to be the land my husband and everybody else went and protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Art Starkovich, and for full disclosure, Art is from SMUD, one of our partner organizations in this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. And thank you all for the opportunity, as a partner, to speak on behalf and, and in support of the Electric Greenway Trail Project. The city first approached us probably six years, seven years ago, and as an electric utility, I said, you know, we have this concept for this, this trail, and it might go through transmission corridors. And SMUD's like, we never thought of that before. So it took a couple of meetings for us to really understand what the concept was and what the city wanted to accomplish here. And, and as we began to see the opportunities and the benefits for, for SMUD and for the city and the other partners, we began to work more closely on that. So it's been, since then, we've submitted three or four letters of support for grants. We've been working periodically over the years. We see it coming closer. The easements, the easements themselves, you know, SMUD, SMUD does not own a whole lot of land, and so many of our, most of our facilities, especially the wires and poles, go through easements, and that limits the uses of what property can be done for the landowners below. But as an electric utility, we see this as, as what we would call an excellent secondary use. Of course, the first use of a transmission easement is for, for public safety and the reliability of the electric system. But the secondary use of a park or a trail is an excellent secondary use, so we're, we are very supportive of that. We're pleased again to see the item before the council tonight, and SMUD looks forward to collaborating on the next steps as it moves forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, Art. David Briggs, and then David will be followed by Al Fox.
Compared to everyone else, I feel like I need a step box here. Vice Mayor Slowie, members of the city council, my name is David Briggs. I live in Area Two, Rush Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm a retired small business owner and have been a city resident for over thirty years. During tonight's meeting, I've been a lifelong supporter of multimodal transportation options, particularly alternatives to the automobile. Over the years, I've had the good fortune of seeing this city grow, mature, and become an area leader in innovative and inclusive mobility options. Street and parking areas now connect with one another. Traffic calming measures throughout the city encourage safe driving and sensible driving, and protection for pedestrians and bicycles. And we now not only have a local RT bus, but on-demand transit for those who cannot or do not drive. Citrus Heights has built an area-wide reputation as being innovative and forward-thinking in all forms of multimodal transportation and transportation alternatives. One means of encouraging alternative travel is use of off-road trails. Citrus Heights alone and in conjunction with Sunrise Parks and Recs has developed numerous short segments connecting separated parts of Stock Ranch, an extensive network of sidewalks in many of its parks, and more recently, an enticing trail segment in the new Arcade Creek Nature Preserve on Sunrise, which my wife and I have utilized numerous times. It's wonderful. Over a several-year period, the city has also worked to create citywide pedestrian and bikeway master plans. One of those trails is the project we're discussing tonight. It will fill a long unmet need, connecting several highly patronized parks and open space areas by a linear link, which will provide exceptional continuity and a convenient car-free alternative to get everywhere, from beyond Sebar C Park to Sunrise Marketplace. This is a gift from the city to the city, waiting to be accepted. Whether you're pushing a stroller, in a wheelchair, riding a bicycle, walking your dog, exercising, or just out for a leisurely stroll, this adds an enormous extension to the city's trails. Its length may also help to ensure its success. Not only will it attract longer-distance runners, but issues related to certain sections of the trail, if they remain unresolved. There remains enough distance between Sunrise and Oak to still construct a major portion of the trail and open it to use while the congested, contested segment is negotiated. I therefore strongly encourage this council to approve this motion, so that Citrus Heights residents can soon enjoy another reason to live and play in this fine city. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Slowie and councilmembers. My name is Albert Fox. I'm a resident of Area Six and a former member and chair of the Citrus Heights Planning Commission. In February, March of 2014, as chairman of the commission, I was honored to be the, preside over the community hearing, and the commission's hearing on the proposed Creek Quarter Trail Project. That report was a result of hundreds of staff hours necessary to prepare and present the project, which, part of which you are seeing here tonight. The public outreach over the course of the development of the project required several meetings, numerous hours of public comment, criticism, and support, and a final report presented to the planning commission was a result of this preparation and included the volume of public documentation received during those workshops. I'm providing this overview as a reminder to both the council and the community that this project is an example of the depth of professionalism, the staff who have provided the community every possibility and opportunity to be heard, and have input into the documentation that finally reached the planning commission. In preparing for those planning commission meetings, I personally walked a proposed trail from Watchtale to Sunrise, as much of it as I can, as I could, including those areas with the stumbling blocks and the fencing. I saw firsthand the illegal camps and the trash of the homeless, the encroachment of property owners living along the creeks and the trail, their lawn trash, old fence wood, other hazardous materials, human waste, drug paraphernalia, and abandoned property that was left there by others. These infringements existed before, but with proper development of these public rights of way, these issues can be addressed and, and a greater extent mitigated. The planning commission held two meetings, one in February the twenty-sixth, 2014, and one on March the twelfth. To my knowledge, these hearings garnered the largest turnout of community members in the history of the commission. We received comments from thirty-four individuals on February the twenty-sixth and thirty-six individuals on March the twelfth. We had more than two hundred people attending the February twenty-sixth meeting. The commissioners heard the concerns of our community. We made changes to that original plan, proposals to eliminate property, private property, to eliminate private lands, and to limit the use of condemnation of private property just to increase public right-of-ways. I believe we sent to city council a very comprehensive plan and recommendations for future planning that stands before you tonight. I do not believe anyone can claim with any validity that this project moved forward without opportunity for public input. I believe before you is a well-planned and thoroughly vetted proposal that deserves your consideration and approval. This project will result in safe and well-traveled path that serves all of our community. Additionally, it provides our police officers with usable pathway to patrol our public lands, provide security for our walkers, our runners, and our bicyclists. I urge you to approve this portion of the plan during your deliberations this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. All right, that is all the speaker sheets I have. I'll give one last call for anybody who neglected to fill one out, wants to talk. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain comments from councilmembers, starting with Portia.
I truly appreciate everyone coming out this evening and telling us why you support or are adverse to this project. A lot of work has been put into it, and I love to hear the input from everyone. I am very sympathetic to the issue of the homeless, the issue of, you know, property rights, and this is something that I'm taking into consideration as we move forward with this.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing tonight, and that is not, what we're not doing tonight, I guess I should say, that'll be easier, is we're not set on a final plan, even though the word "final" is in the, the motion. There will still be definitely time to work with property owners to try to, you know, come up with the best solution for everybody, and I share concerns about things like RV access and that kind of thing. And so please don't think that we are going away from today and it's all done. It's not all done, and there'll be time for more input and certainly more negotiation, hopefully back and forth, where we work things out, you know, best for everybody. But this is something that the community has wanted, and as the speaker said, the train has left the station, and what we can do now is, is work together, hopefully, and, and make everybody happy in the end.
Thank you, Brett. Yeah, so what we're doing tonight is CEQA. I mean, even if you understand it, it's tough to
I mean, even if you understand it, it's tough to understand. It's really the physical effect on the environment, right? And based on that, if there's impacts, they're to be rated, high, medium, low, and if they're higher medium, we need to mitigate them to where they're acceptable for the project to go forward. So, if we move forward with the mitigated negative declaration, all that we're saying is, based on the environmental study, we concur that anything that's rated as a high obstacle, high issue, we have, within the report, others have determined how to mitigate it. You know, trees, yeah, some trees are gonna be lost, but we have a process throughout the city to mitigate lost trees. We gotta plant, if we take out 18 inches of trees, we gotta plant X amount in response to that, and, you know, additionally monitor it for so many years to make sure it continues to grow. And to Brett's point, if we move forward on this, this isn't ending negotiations. I mean, we haven't even seen the final design of whatever it's gonna look like, right? I mean, is it gonna be curved? Is it gonna be, you know, that's all to come. This is really about the environmental impacts of this potential project. So, any negotiations are, you know, not only will continue but must continue as we move forward, and I noticed as a couple of you were here, you don't live in Citrus Heights, which I'm here to tell you, we're doing the project with all these partners. We're gonna try to come up with the best proposal for everybody, not just Citrus Heights residents. You know, I mean, two of you live in Orange Vale. To me, the boundary shouldn't matter. If we're putting a project in that affects somebody, you know, outside of our city, we still need to be responsible for trying to come up with the best solution to that. So, what that is, you know, smarter minds than mine will figure that out, but we're not done here if we do move forward, and I think to Brett's point, we just wanna echo that, that, you know, this doesn't mean things just stop. So, Mr. Miller, comments?
Oh, I thought you forgot me.
No, I, I just wanted to go in front of you.
Okay. Fair enough. Then I won't repeat. I've said this before, and I have toured the trails in both Roseville and Folsom. Folsom was a few years ago, and the common theme with everybody with these trails there in those two cities was they were flat out against them. They were worried about the security, their land being taken, and insisted on solid fences, you know, to keep people out of their backyards. But, once they opened, and this is talking to actual residents that live up to these trails, they wanted gates put in. They wanted the city to pay for gates to be put in, and it's like, too late, but you just, everybody you came across was a resident, out walking their dog, their kids, on bikes, and it really changed my mind, and I can't argue with the motions. I understand the trepidation with something like this going in. I'm a proponent of the project. I think it'll increase demand for trails in other neighborhoods, and certainly in Roseville and Folsom, it's increased property values, and there's a huge demand there for the trail system to be expanded, and eventually, someday, we will tie into the Folsom American River Trail, which is very exciting. I remain a proponent as long, Casey, as long as we work with the residents on the lighting issues, whether it be all night, off, you know, off at a certain time, or even motion-activated, you know, to kind of alert you that someone's back there. Whatever, you know, work with the residents on this final design and address the access issues we've been talking about, fencing and security for the folks, 'cause I think this can be a really good project, and getting to the specific point at hand, the environmental document. I mean, we're talking about putting in a walking and a bike trail, and you have to do an environmental analysis on that, so I support the mitigated negative declaration.
MND, great.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, towns, like most everybody understands where we are, wants to proceed, but I won't put words in anybody's mouth. There are two motions in front of us, so what's the pleasure of the council?
Can we move approval of both items?
Don't know why not, but we'll ask the city attorney.
That is fine.
I do.
Move the two on the screen here in front of everybody? Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting these two motions, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motions carry four zero. So, that was the two motions for not only the regular calendar but the special edition? Okay. Well, with that, I would invite the mayor to come back and take the microphone and go forward with the meeting.
There's a bit of delay on the project. Do you wanna go knock on the door? Yeah, here she comes.
I'd like to ask the audience to leave quietly, please, and have your conversations out in the hall so we can continue the meeting. Thank you very much. And our next item, please.
Our next item is public hearing number six. The subject is public hearing number five regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code and the California Voting Rights Act, and the recommendation is to hear for a second reading and adopt an ordinance establishing a by-district election process in five council districts pursuant to California Elections Code and adding sections 2.34 through 2.37 to the Citrus Heights Municipal Code to provide for city council election districts.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Kathryn Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight marks the fifth and final public hearing in our series of hearings regarding transitioning from at-large elections to district-based elections. The council has heard four public hearings' worth of public comment on this item. On the fourth public hearing, the council selected map 102 for inclusion in the districting ordinance. A staff has made that move to include map 102 in the ordinance, and we will, by adopting the ordinance tonight, the city will be in compliance with the 180-day timeframe as required by statute. And so, with that, staff recommends that the council open the public hearing, hear any public comment that may be present tonight, and also adopt the ordinance, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question before we get to open the public hearing. I had received an email on the district numbers. I just don't remember what they, you know, one through five.
Sure.
Did we move those around, or did those remain the same? I don't recall.
We have kept them consistent with what is in your packet tonight.
Okay.
And so, it would be District 1, 4, 2 at the top of the map, and then 3 and 5 on the southern end of the city, and so, that's what you would be adopting tonight. I would assume that we could change the numbering at some point.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
The question was asked, and I didn't compare the two maps. I mean, the outlines are the same, so that counts.
Yeah. So, we have, we changed the numbering once to make it consistent with all your options, and we have not changed it.
Okay.
A second time.
Okay. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is the public hearing, and I have one speaker sheet. So, the public hearing is open. I'd like to call David Warren forward, please.
I'm grateful I got to go home for dinner. I've looked at the map, and I'm here tonight to speak against the adoption as suggested. I recognize that the map was designed around populations, but I think that the geographic definitions, as they're laid out, are going to adversely impact the ability of minority candidates to succeed in any of the districts. The district in which I live, or as proposed, will have no candidate based on the current council members, which should invite a significant number of potential candidates, but I don't believe it will. It appears to me, based on the history of our community, the leadership comes from outside the proposed district. We do not have enough individuals who have the time or economic ability to devote to the city council. That would come from at least my proposed district, whereas in other districts, they're heavily weighted. We need to make sure we get the best competent people to take the position, not necessarily from a particular district or area, and the way they are aligned now, pardon me, the way they are aligned as proposed, I believe my district will be unable to do so. Best example is I'd be the worst council member possible from my district, but I'm glad you agree. But, the problem is, we need younger people to be on the city council. We're aging out, and the way my district's aligned, there are too many empty nesters in my district, which will prevent the younger people from moving into positions. For that reason, I oppose the proposed map. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anybody else from the public here to speak? All right. Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing, public comment, and entertain any comments by the council.
Yeah, I mean, this is a tough one. None of us up here want to go this path. It's a legal, it's a legal decision we're making because, quite frankly, we're getting sued over it. The gentleman who's suing us has gone to court 28 times and won 28 times. It's a pretty good record to say that we would probably lose. So, you know, I think the maps are, the map that we're looking at is the best of the ones we've seen. Could there be a better one? Yeah, if we took forever to do it, the problem is we're under a certain timeline to get this done, or we still get sued. So, I'll move the map that we all agreed on last time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Just to add to Jeff's comments, none of the maps feel 100% good. I think this is the best of the lot, and who knows? We don't know where some of the talent is, and the fact that we are in districts, there will be people that come forward that feel like they have a better chance to win as a district council member than an at-large council member, so even given the demographics that Mr. Warren commented on, I think that there very well could be candidates there that we just have not met yet. So, with that having been said, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this map. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. And that will close this public hearing. Okay. Next item, please.
The next, that was the last item on the agenda tonight, so the last item is any items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
I have nothing to offer, so we will.
Yeah, one thing.
Briefly?
Yeah, it'll be brief. It's not a future agenda item, but it's a future item. I would like to, in two days, my wife and I will celebrate our anniversary, and I would just like to publicly acknowledge her. She is an amazing lady, and just, guys, if you need one bit of advice, it's happy wife, happy life.
I thought you were gonna ask one of us to watch the kid.
Okay. With that, I'd like to close tonight's meeting in memory of Officer Tara O'Sullivan, who gave her life and for the protection of others, and made the ultimate sacrifice from the Sacramento Police Department, and so have a moment of silence on her memory, and then we will Thank you. We are adjourned.